Okay. It's 10:00 AM and welcome, everybody. And welcome. Our meeting is called to order and we welcome the Dunbar Elementary Choir. Sorry, I'll quit shouting and talking to the mic. We welcome the Dunbar Elementary Choir and we also welcome April Pettit, who will be coordinating things for us. And the first thing we'll have is the Pledge of Allegiance by the choir, followed by our National Anthem and another song. So if we could all... No, we're not having another song. We have just the National Anthem.
Surprise!
Okay, appreciate that. And everybody stand for the National Anthem.
Face the flag, please.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, face me. Ready? Oh, say can...
And you'll see when the dawn comes to light. There's a path we'll clear.
Look at you.
At the twilight's last gleaming. Blue skies and bright stars through the perilous night sky. The records we watch were so gallantly streaming. And the broken record club on the pier singing. They knew the night that our flag was still there. Oh, send us the stars, send us the memory and way.
Watch me.
For the land of the free and the home of the brave.
Thank you very much.
Natalie?
And thank you to the super photographer. Great videoing.
It's my assistant director.
Awesome. Have a great day. All right, we'll start with a roll call.
President Narducci.
Here.
Vice President Cor.
Here.
Superintendent Hoffman.
Here.
Member Broussard.
Present.
Member Baker.
Present.
Chang.
Present.
Member Kay.
Here.
Member Mack.
Here.
Member Burton.
Here.
Member Ruiz.
Present.
Member Welborn.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Fantastic, thank you very much. And we're going to move right into a great part of our meeting this morning. And we're excited to welcome to our meeting today three highly achieving schools in early literacy. Terry Clark from Reed on Arizona will be assisting the board in recognizing these schools in their work. Ms. Clark?
Thank you, President Narducci and Superintendent Hoffman and all board members. I'm here today to share with you, we identified schools that had distinctive trends in a few ways. Improvement for all students, low-income students, schools that were having success in decreasing the minimally proficient number of students lifting them out of the lowest category on Arizona's 3rd grade assessment. And we looked at schools by urban, rural, suburban areas, as well as public and charter, as well as other subgroups. Our hope was that by highlighting these schools that are making progress across the state in a variety of settings and in challenging circumstances, we could create a shared learning network. Schools that see they have similar demographics or community profiles would reach out and learn from the case study schools. And now I'd like to turn it over to my colleague from the Department of Education, Sean Ross, and he's going to share the site visit process and highlights from each of the case studies that are with us today.
President Narducci, Superintendent Hoffman, members of the board. I am so excited to be here to honor these schools and the transformational work they are doing with their students, their teachers, their families. Terry described how schools were selected for the project. Once a school was selected, we scheduled an onsite interview. And we asked that there be administrators, literacy coaches, K-3 teachers, paraprofessionals, parents, basically everybody who's part of the literacy team to be present in this interview so that we could get the full story, the full tapestry of what was occurring in these schools. And we wanted to hear from as many viewpoints as possible because we were going to weave these stories of what was working into these case studies that you have before you today that we're going to share with the rest of the state. So in visiting each school, we saw systems that were everywhere. Every person on campus was involved in reading. Every person on campus was involved with literacy, from the administrators to the librarians, to the bus drivers. It was all hands on deck and you could see that really working. At Legacy Traditional in Queen Creek, we saw every teacher and administrator receive training in their core reading program so that all students were insured to have high-quality Tier One instruction. At Lincoln Elementary in O'Gallas, they had their entire staff trained in the teaching reading effectively training to make sure that every single member of their staff understood the science of reading. And at Wildflower Elementary in the Avondale School District, we saw a staff empowered to use its data to comb through its kindergarten through 3rd grade curricula in order to fill gaps and to strengthen foundational reading instruction. So all three of these schools had a focus on investing in teachers to achieve an instructional lift that resulted in tremendous growth in 3rd grade reading, which is detailed again in these case studies. All three of these schools embraced their parent communities, guiding them through data nights and providing them with specific strategies that they could use at home to assist their students to become lifelong readers. And these three schools really prove what we've always known. Effective leadership, empowered teachers, and informed and involved parents lead to student success. So it is my great honor to call each of these schools up in turn. We're going to begin alphabetically with Legacy Traditional Queen Creek.
What we'd like to do is ask all the schools to come up in front and stand in front of the deists. And we'll take a picture with the board standing behind them and give them a reward. I'll stand on the chair, will that work?
One, two.
Three, two, one.
Congratulations.
Up next, we have Lincoln Elementary from the O'Gallas School District.
Congratulations. Congrats. Good morning. Congratulations. Good luck to your work. Good luck to your work.
All right, here we go. One, two, three.
And three, two, one.
And our final school, Wildflower School from the Avondale School District.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Three, two, one.
Congratulations to all of you. Appreciate all the work, all the effort and all the love that goes into that. Now we'll move on to our superintendent's report, which I understand is quite lengthy, so buckle up and we're ready to go.
Well, it's a very positive report, so I'm excited. And this has just been such a wonderful, beautiful way to start the day. We love celebrating the success of our schools, so thank you so much to our schools for being here so we can celebrate with you and honor your successes in literacy. I want to also just say good thank you to everyone who is here today. Good morning. And before I start my report, I would like to respectfully acknowledge that the geographical landscape of today's meeting sits on the ancestral homelands of those indigenous nations that have inhabited this land for centuries, including the Otum, Yavapai, and Ho'ohokam people. First, a quick recap of the new year. Since January, I've had the opportunity to visit schools in four counties, Yuma, Cochise, Penal, and of course, Maricopa. These continued visits have shown once again the incredible work of our students and schools, as well as some of the struggles that our schools face. In Yuma, I had the best time celebrating Arizona's Milken Teacher of the Year Award, which went to Principal Omar Duran at Southwest Junior High School. In Cochise, I visited two school communities in Naco and Bisbee. I also visited with educators across Cochise County at their annual Innovations in Education Conference. In Penal County, I visited Superior's 2th School District where I was joined by Representative Cook. And finally, in Maricopa, here locally, I visited Rhodes Junior High, where they are using innovative learning strategies to improve their school outcomes. So doing the school visits is one of the best parts of the job, so I love to share those highlights with you all. Following an update to the Every Student Succeeds Act, or ESSA, our school report card system will soon show per pupil spending at the school level. Our goal is to have these numbers available by spring, and our communications team will be sending resources, as well as offering trainings to school leaders on what these numbers mean and how to share them out to their school communities. Another announcement is that the applications for this year's student advisor positions are now open. We will be accepting application for student advisor positions for our Latinx Advisory Council, African-American Advisory Council, Equitable and Inclusive Advisory Practices Council, as well as our Native American, which is the Indian Education Advisory Council, and of course, our very important Student Advisory Council. So if you know any students from 5th grade on up through the college level, they can check out that application. And that's for the next school year. We'll be doing applications interviews this spring for students to serve in the next school year, starting around August. Now on to more awards, because we love to celebrate and recognize all the great achievements of our educators. So first, the... And actually, I'm going to go over there for these. All right. So first, we have the Presidential Award of Excellence in Math and Science Teaching. The Presidential Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching is the highest recognition that a kindergarten through 12th grade, science, technology, engineering, mathematics, and/or computer science teacher may receive for outstanding teaching in the United States. Up to 108 teachers are recognized each year. Presidential awardees receive a certificate signed by the President of the United States, a trip to Washington DC to attend a series of recognition events, and professional development opportunities. And I think maybe the best part might be a $10,000 award from the National Science Foundation. Awardees also join an active network of outstanding educators throughout the nation. And since 1983, more than 5,000 teachers have been recognized for their contributions in the classroom and to their profession. Awardees reflect the expertise and dedication of the nation's teaching corps as they demonstrate the positive impact of excellent teachers on student achievement. We have four Arizona teachers to recognize today who are wonderful examples of teaching excellence that is happening throughout schools in Arizona. So first, the science awardees. The 2017 awardee is Seve Anderson of Aba Caliente Elementary School in the Tenque Verde School District in Tucson, Arizona. The 2018 awardee is Deborah Nypar of Hamilton High School in the Chandler School District in Chandler, Arizona. For math, the 2017 awardee is Amy Legara of Richardson Elementary in the Flowing Wells District in Tucson, Arizona. And the 2018 awardee for math is Nicole Witt of Empire High School in the Vail School District in Vail, Arizona. Congratulations again to the Arizona awardees for 2017 and 2018 Presidential Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. Another very important award, the Arizona History Teacher of the Year Award. It is truly an honor to recognize Mr. William Ramers as the 2019 Arizona History Teacher of the Year, an award presented annually by the Gilder Lehrman Institute of American History. This is the nation's leading organization dedicated to K-12 American history education. Will is a history teacher at Trevor Brown High School, and this year will be his 14th year teaching in the Phoenix Union High School District. Will is a National Board Certified Teacher. And in addition to a BA in history, he holds two separate master's degrees, one in International Relations and the other in Secondary Education. He is also an Arizona Master Teacher and a National Geographic Certified Educator. He is no stranger to awards and has been honored as an exemplary educator by the Phoenix Union High School District multiple times, in addition to being honored by the Diamondbacks, the Arizona Council for the Social Studies, and the Arizona Education Association. Will just finished his term as the President of the Arizona Council for the Social Studies. In his nomination letter, Sid Golston, past President of the National Council of the Social Studies and former member of the Phoenix Union High School District Community, writes that she remembers best a class when reenactor Will, dressed as a barbarian conqueror invading Rome. She also highlighted Will's work with the Phoenix Union Teaching American Studies in the Schools Grant, and wrote that "Will always goes above and beyond in all that he does." He was even the photographer and recorder for the summer workshops that grant recipients attended. Will brings history to life for his students and is committed to providing high-quality education to ensure all of his students not only learn, but have a positive experience. I'd like to call up, is Mr. William Ramers here? And next, we have one ADE Employee Recognition Award to give. This is for Kristin Heck, who works in... is a grants processing supervisor. And she was nominated by Sarah Hendricks. Sarah wrote in her nomination that Kristin Heck has been with the agency for six years. Her work is invaluable to both the business and finance and grants management teams. She is the agency's resident expert in EDGAR, UGG, USFR, and other regulations, and is also ready to go the extra mile. Because of her commitment to the work and her exceptional customer service skills, people often rely on her expertise when they are stuck on a problem or would like her to double-check their solutions. She has worked to bridge the gap between fiscal and program staff by ensuring more communication to both internal and external customers. Sarah writes, she is very grateful for her work and support. So I have a certificate to present to Kristin Heck. All right. And now I would like to introduce members of our Student Advisory Council. We have a presentation from these student advisors. And today, our student presenters are Xander Simmons, Izzy Garcia, and Abdulha Sayed.
Hello and good morning. I'm Izzy Garcia. I'm a 5th grade student at Canyonview Elementary School in Tucson, Arizona. Before I get started, I would like to say that being here today is an honor and a privilege. I would like to thank my family, teachers, State Superintendent Kathy Hoffman, Sophia Mayberry, and many others for all of your support. Today, I will be talking to you about the survey we created at the last Student Advisory Board meeting, as well as why we made it. So the reason we made the survey is to see the way some schools function, to see the students' opinion on their school, and to see ways we are able to improve the education system in Arizona. Two of the questions that stood out to me were, how do you feel your future or future career is being supported at school? And are you comfortable and accepted being who you are at school? We all have hopes and dreams, and school is supposed to help us make those dreams a reality, or at least get us ready to succeed and excel in our future. This is really important, because most students want to do different things when they grow up. Plus, many students will not stick with what they want to be when they are 4 or 13. So schools have to be general and prepare students for everything and anything. Schools must prepare students for any challenges they might face. The next question spoke to me because some students are teased because of being theirselves. That is oftentimes why many students resort to bullying, to stop bullying from happening to them. Though this is not right, it still happens. We need to figure out how much of that is happening across our Arizona schools. By knowing this, we will be able to take action by putting successful anti-bullying programs to use. Thank you for listening to me cover these valuable points. I hope I am of help. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Xander Simmons, and I go to Sonoran Trails Middle School. I'm in 8th grade. So last week, my middle school counselors came in to register us for high school, and they gave us the forms, and they were shocked when they saw that I filled out all AP and honors courses. They were like, "Mr. Simmons, this is a very rigorous schedule. Do you think you're ready for it?" I mean, so I said, "I don't know." Because at my local public school, we're not offered the opportunity to take honors So if I had more exposure to these challenging courses, I'd be more prepared for high school and beyond. The only advanced options that students take are high school math. And students that want to take other advanced courses aren't offered those opportunities. Currently, I am taking high school math, but I really want to take high school-level social studies and English. Taking more high school courses would allow me to be able to experience more rigor at a younger age. As well as advanced courses, a targeted curriculum that would cater to each student's needs so that the courses that they take help to shape their future more would be extremely helpful. Is it possible that the State Board can listen to each student's needs and assess them and give them funding or curriculum to take specialized courses outside the general education requirements? This would be a great alternative for students, as it would help them to build an immense skill set that they would use in their future, during high school, college, and further into life. I'm looking to you, the State Board of Education, to bring opportunities and advanced learning for students like me to be inspired before I get to high school, so we can be awesome! Thank you.
Hello, my name is Abdulha Sayed. I'm in 7th grade. I go to Bassett-Chandler. I... First of all, I would like to thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak at the State Board. And I think the Student Council is a... I think the Student Council is a very good platform to discuss the various needs of students and provide appropriate support for their needs. As children, we spend more than 50% of our quality time at school gaining education. Personally, I feel like life and education seem to be very interconnected and synonymous with one another. So as a student, I feel school should be the best place for each and every student who attends them. This is what usually makes or breaks a future citizen of a society. I think schools should incorporate and focus on certain areas. I'll mention four. Number one, cellphone and social media usage. Number two, safety measures in case of unexpected events like shooting or fires, in case of fires and abduction. Number three, mental issues and coping with stress. Number four, dealing with drugs and other addictions. I acknowledge that some of these issues have been identified by schools and schools are working on it, but these issues still appear and continue. I think schools should conduct these educational and awareness sessions more often and regularly, and these should include two elements. Number one, the one... a content expert, the one who knows about these topics. And number two, students we can relate with, which have gone through these experiences. I think these sessions should be conducted in a fun and friendly manner, drawing from their experiences. And it should be a safe place where students can open up. In our last meeting in the Student Council, we discussed and made student surveys. And through these surveys, we will be able to get feedback of different schools and students, which might help us expand on these topics. Thank you.
Thank you so much to our student advisors for your presentation. That was phenomenal. I'm so impressed.
Thank you.
So hopefully, that's also just another reminder to everyone that our student advisor application is open. These students are serving on our Student Advisory Council, which is for 5th through 12th graders. And they are incredibly inspiring, so thoughtful, and just so impressive. So thank you again for the families for helping your students to be here with us today.
Thank you, Superintendent Hoffman. Thanks, that was wonderful, you guys. I really appreciated your reports and all the awards, everybody. It's fantastic. Especially, you guys are so articulate in the way that you expressed yourself. It was tremendously awesome. I have to excuse... I have to excuse myself for a meeting that started at 10:30 that I'm going to get on the phone, but I'll turn it over to the director, who probably doesn't have a report, who then will turn it over to Vice President Corr, who will handle it for me while I'm on my call. So, excuse me, I'll be right back.
Vice President Corr, Superintendent Hoffman, members of the board, I do not have a report today, so we can move on to item two.
Fantastic. I will do so then, and that is, excuse me, call of the public. This is the time for the public to comment. Members of the board may not discuss items that are not specifically identified on the agenda. Therefore, no action will be taken as a result of public comment, but it will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, responding to any criticism, or scheduling the matter for further consideration decision at a later time. So, do we have anyone who would like to address us on the consent agenda?
Vice President Corr, members of the board, we do not have any calls to the public for this agenda item.
All that for no public comment?
Well, I just, I wanted you to just say it all as people exit the meeting.
Okay, so as a little filler while we emptied the room of the award winners. Fair enough. So then I will move us on to item three, which is in fact the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items 3A through 3E?
So moved. I'll move.
If I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, or any discussion?
No.
No, I suppose we don't discuss the consent. Yet, no discussion. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Fair enough. Motion carries. I will move us on to, back to the call to the public. This is item four, and we'll have anyone wishing to address the board as it relates to the general session. So again, this is time for the public to come in, and items that are our general session agenda. Do we have anyone who wishes to address the board?
Vice President Corr, members of the board, we have two requests to speak today. Each speaker will have three minutes for the public comment. First up, we have Mark Jordanstad, followed by Jonathan Roloff.
Good morning, Vice President Corr, Superintendent Hoffman, members of the board. I'm for the record, Dr. Mark Jordanstad, Executive Director, Arizona School Administrators. I'm going to, first of all, say ASA is having a Women in Leadership Conference in a few weeks, and I think the young lady from the Student Council should probably attend that conference. She seems to have a future in leadership. And I feel pretty good about the youth of our state after hearing those three young people address us. I want to comment briefly on the bonus points for special education, which you're considering in, I think it's Agenda Item 4D?
5D.
5D, thank you. I stand corrected. I'm advocating for the A model, which you have there, the tiered model. One of the things that's very important to the Arizona School Administrators, we have an incredibly diverse array of districts and schools that we represent. It's all the schools in Arizona, basically. And A through F is a difficult system because it strives to do no harm to not inadvertently penalize any of the incredibly diverse schools we have, including many of our small rural districts. And as you looked at the data thoughtfully prepared by the department and the Technical Advisory Committee, you see that some of the rural districts in Greenlee County, for example, they take all students in. That's very important to the Arizona School Administrators, that our public schools take everyone who walks in the door. Despite doing that, some of them fall below, well below, the state average in special education students. They're taking everybody in. We feel that the system should not inadvertently penalize those schools. We feel that Model A best addresses that. One year, they might fall below; the next year, a couple families move into a very small rural school, and suddenly, they're fine. The next year, a couple families move, then they're not fine. Those things fluctuate in small districts, and it's very important that an A-through-F model be flexible enough to adjust to those type of situations. Therefore, we believe that Model A best addresses those potential difficulties. Thank you for your kind attention.
Thank you.
Jonathan Roloff.
Good morning, Vice President Corr, Superintendent Hoffman, members of the board. Jonathan Roloff, I've been here before. I'm the Director of Data and Research with the Fowler District, also part of the Technical Advisory Committee. I'm here speaking on behalf of myself. I also want to mention that, you know, in my role as in the Fowler School District, I've also been a principal, and prior to that, I was also a teacher in Title I and non-Title I districts. And in addition to that, I had all three of my children attended Fowler School, so I'm speaking as a parent as well. I want to come back to the point that I feel like the importance of the letter grade in the state of Arizona is that we are assessing what our schools are doing with our kids when they're in our care, and not how the kids are coming to us. And I still feel like the A-through-F system rewards kids based on the zip code they lived in, not how the school is doing. With that being said, I want to address specifically the special ed bonus points. I feel like we've had some rich discussion, both in our district administrative team meetings and in the Technical Advisory Meeting, and I agree with everything that Dr. Jordan says, Ted, except for, I'm for the 60% cutoff. Reason being is because not all of our schools in our district hit the 80% mark, and we don't have a lot of kids moving in and out of our district for a reason of school choice. We do have a high transancy population, and I dare to say or speculate that the reason that our schools, we're servicing all the kids within our boundaries. We have some kids with some severe needs, and, but we also have rich intervention systems that also do not get funded, that I think we are trying to prevent the kids from being labeled as special education, and our intervention systems in our schools are doing a great job, but we're just below the 80% mark. I also believe that a tiered system, we need to be very careful what we incentivize, and by qualifying more children for special education, as opposed to dealing with children and providing them the support that they need with the resources we have, is valuable, which is why I'd like to advocate for the 60% cutoff. Another part of consideration on the bonus points is, I feel like there's been discussion about, you know, schools getting bonus points because, you know, special ed is underfunded, and the pass rate is not as high as other groups. I'd also like to bring into consideration schools with high ELD population, that that's also another group that fits into that category, and so I'd like to just take that consideration. I don't want to set back the whole A-through-F process two years behind. But then, also poverty. That's, once again, another item that seems to affect how schools perform on the A-through-F accountability system, and I don't want it to be discouraging to our teachers and our principals and our families in our Title I districts, or in our lower socioeconomic districts. So I would argue that those groups maybe deserve as much attention. Thank you all. Summarize once again that I believe the A-through-F system really should recognize what our schools do with the kids, not how the kids come to us. Thank you. Have a wonderful day.
Thank you.
Vice President Corr, members of the board, that concludes item number four.
Great, thank you. We'll move on to item five, the general session. Item 5A is for information only, and I believe we're going to welcome the Center for the Future of Arizona to provide the board information pertaining to their Beat the Odds Leadership Academy. Amanda Burke.
Vice President Corr, members of the board, Superintendent Hoffman, it's my pleasure to come before you today. Sorry, just do this for you before you get started. Thanks. I'll take all the help. Okay, we'll try this again. Vice President Corr, Superintendent Hoffman, members of the board, my name is Amanda Burke, and I'm the Managing Director of Strategic Initiatives and Impact with the Center for the Future of Arizona. And on behalf of the Center for the Future of Arizona, we greatly appreciate the opportunity to come before you today to share the Beat the Odds School Leadership Academy and early impact that we're having with school leaders across the state. I'm joined today by Katie Cavanaugh, our incredible Director of Educational Leadership, who leads the BTO Academy, and two of our participants, who will be able to share, from their perspective, the impact of the training a little bit later in this presentation. The Center for the Future of Arizona is a nonpartisan, action-oriented nonprofit focused on advancing Arizona's future success, which we refer to as the Arizona we want. My colleague Katie Cavanaugh will often remind me that in other sectors, there are mantras that guide the work. So, for example, in real estate, the mantra might be "location, location, location." And in education, really, our mantra is "context, context, context." And part of our context at the Center for the Future of Arizona, and also guiding our work with the Beat the Odds School Leadership Academy, is looking at reliable, trusted data on how our state and how our communities are progressing. The Education Progress Meter, which CFA developed with our partners at Expect More Arizona, provides this information and guides our work, and this is one of eight progress meters that the Center for the Future of Arizona has now developed and released. I wanted to be able to frame the work of the School Leadership Academy within how our students are progressing, in particular, taking a look at the achievement gaps that are still persistent and that we really need to continue to focus addressing. So, we know in education, that education is vital to our state's economic prosperity, to our quality of life, and to individual opportunity. And there's been broad agreement that achieving the goals of the Education Progress Meter will invigorate economic growth and unlock the potential of individuals and communities. And while Arizona has gained ground in a number of areas which needs to be celebrated, we also know that if progress continues at the same rate, we are going to fall short of the 2030 goals. And in particular, we're not doing enough to meet the needs of our most diverse learners. We need to continue to close the achievement gap, increase educational attainment, and prepare a highly skilled workforce. So, the data, though, helps us ask really good questions. It doesn't tell us the answers. And so, at the Center for the Future of Arizona, an example of the big questions that drives us is the one before you. How do we best equip all young people with the knowledge and skills needed to succeed and thrive in today's rapidly changing world? The Center for the Future of Arizona recognizes the critical link between a strong principle and student success for all learners. We know that great schools require great leaders. With strong support from Governor Ducey through his Great Schools, Great Leaders Initiative, and matching investments from the philanthropic community, including Helios Education Foundation and Burton Family Foundation, the Center for the Future of Arizona established the Beat the Odds School Leadership Academy in 2017, building on years of experience that CFA had in the space of education leadership development. An investment in school leadership is a strategic investment in improved student outcomes. Leadership for, leadership development for principals is a driver of school performance nationwide, and it's a lever to improve teacher recruitment, retention, and quality at our schools. Principals who are effective leaders of learning are often cited by classroom teachers as the key reason that they continue to stay in the classroom and be successful. Because we know that great leaders hire great teachers and retain them, we know that the majority of impact on student learning comes from teachers and leaders who are working together as a team to improve learning outcomes for all their students. The Beat the Odds School Leadership Academy is a locally-delivered, research-based, executive leadership training for both aspiring and current school leaders. The curriculum that we utilize is the nationally-recognized National Institute for School Leadership Executive Development Program that draws on the strongest leadership development practices from education, business, and the military. The BTO Academy creates powerful communities of learners, bringing together school and district leaders that come together to share and learn in support of student achievement for all students. The profile of an effective school and district leader from BTO and NISSL includes each of the skills and knowledge that you see listed here on this slide. For about two years, the leaders study, reflect, and design plans together as they dig deeply into case studies of high-performing education, business, and military systems. They apply the strategic elements of these successes to their own community of learners, going back to context, and their teachers. Each leader expands their own capacity to build successful teams and to support the implementation of what we call an aligned system of teaching and learning. They increase their capacity to lead change needed in the implementation of successful systems. And finally, they create a vision from this deep study of learning and then prioritize their strategic action needed to design a system where all learners in their context can be college and career and life-ready. And just like the young individuals, I think, touched many of us speaking from the advisory, the young woman that said, you know, "Students want to succeed and excel in their future," that that's really the goal, that's precisely what we're talking about here as well. And the work is job-embedded and implied. So, for example, the skills and knowledge from the BTO Academy align directly to the school-integrated action plan that each school must create in order to be, meet both state and federal statutory and regulatory requirements. So, let's talk about impact. So, much has been accomplished since we first created the BTO Academy in 2017, and a number of those impacts are listed here, including creating truly a best-in-class set of BTO facilitators who are Arizona leaders proven in their work and nationally-certified to deliver the NISSL curriculum. We've trained 210 school leaders from across the state and are quickly expanding, and we've created a pathway for graduate credit and certification for BTO Academy participants through a robust partnership with NAU, which we're grateful for. And recently, we designed a research-based BTO coaching model designed to support the implementation of the knowledge and skills that these leaders gain so that they can continue to apply it and impact the growth of their staff and students. Relative to outcomes, I know one of the board members expressed interest in us being able to speak to this specifically. We are collecting data, the earliest that we can go back is 2019, so we're looking at data from 2019 to 2021, and would be happy to provide that data, and that's because 2017 is when we first created the academy, so from the time of enrolling individuals. But what we do know is that anecdotally, a number of BTO Academy leaders have improved school labels and also improved on the metrics that I opened the conversation with within the Arizona Education Progress Meter. And in a moment, I'm going to turn it over to two of those participants who can speak directly about the impact. I did want to touch nationally on the impact, because this is a nationally-research-based curriculum that we're using. Nationally, RAND reported in 2016 that NISSL was the only professional learning activity for principals found to increase student achievement and to meet the SA Tier 2 level of evidence, which is needed to be able to use federal funding to pay for this particular professional learning. NISSL was the only professional learning program with research meeting the What Works Clearinghouse criteria with a positive impact on student achievement. And third-party research in various states has shown that NISSL, that school leaders who have completed the NISSL training, that they do see increased student achievement as measured on standardized test scores. And then finally, NISSL was the only leadership development program recognized by the Business Roundtable for its impact on student achievement, capacity for scalability, and support of rigorous and college and career-ready standards. To tell local stories of impact and outcomes, I'd like to introduce, a superintendent and principal have joined us, and before I do that, I also want to recognize that among your board, you have firsthand knowledge of the quality of the BTO Academy, as member Jill Broussard is currently participating in one of our cohorts. So, it is my pleasure to now welcome Dr. Joetta Gonzalez, Superintendent of Casa Grande Elementary School District, and Eric Atuhini, who is the Principal of Quentin Stem Elementary Academy in the Littleton Elementary School District. Elementary School District.
President Narducci, members of the board, Superintendent Hoffman, my name is Dr. Joetta Gonzalez, and I'm the Superintendent of the Casa Grande Elementary School District, located in Casa Grande, Arizona. Halfway between Phoenix and Tucson, we have 13 schools and 6,600 students. We have a vision for our district, and that is to be a community of learners, leaders, and innovators. And embedded in the vision is the value of equity, that is, valuing the richness of our diverse community by ensuring that all students have access to strong schools and programs, by lifting student voices to address and impact change, and to focus on strengths and the belief that everyone belongs, everyone can learn, and all really does mean all. When I came to Casa Grande as a superintendent, we had lackluster school and, or, school performance. We were looking for a way to invest in our leaders so that we could sustainably improve and grow. We identified and invested in that growth and development for our leaders by choosing the Beat the Odds Academy, because of its strong research base and aligned frameworks that would help us develop coherent instructional improvement strategies. Those systems for sustainable improvements are what drive our belonging to Beat the Odds. Every one of our directors, myself, and every one of our school principals will be going through Beat the Odds Academy. In fact, I currently left my Beat the Odds Academy session to be here with you right now.
Do you need a note or anything?
I've got three others that are with me, and then we have four others that join the Pinal County group. I was really excited to bring Beat the Odds to Pinal County as well, because our schools have a lot of transancy. We share students amongst our districts, and it's important that all of us have the frameworks and the coherence to address the needs of our students. By investing in all leaders, we also invest in the teaching profession. And we deliver on our promise and our mission. Success for everyone, the responsibility is yours and mine. It's that common language, it's the frameworks, and it's the cohesion that really drive our participation in Beat the Odds. We're newbies, but we're looking forward to seeing incredible results. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Eric Atuhini. I am the proud principal at Quentin STEM Academy. We are part of the Littleton Elementary School District. We are also located in the South Avondale. I'm pleased to share with you my experience with the Beat the Odds Academy. Some of the dynamics at the school that I work at are 90% free and reduced lunch, 17% of our students are special education, 17% of our kids are English-language learners, and 24% of our students have, are mobile or transient. And 40% of our teachers are considered new, which is less than three years of experience. As a building leader, it is critical to be able to be a part of a leadership development program that grows you professionally and personally. The Beat the Odds Academy provided me with high-quality, collaborative, and real-world leadership development. I was exposed to units that developed me as a strategic thinker. We discuss foundations of learning and core subjects, ethical leadership for equity, and driving and sustaining change. The work we engaged in allowed me to cascade it to my school. For the two years that I was in the program, I directly correlate the school being able to move from a C-label to a high-B label, missing out on an A by less than three points. Without the support, development, and experience the Beat the Odds Academy provided me, the sustained successes the school has achieved would not be a reality. I strongly encourage educational leaders, anybody that supports educational institutions, to be a part of the Beat the Odds program. Thank you very much for your time and attention.
Just two slides in closing. This is a snapshot of all of the communities with which we have currently partnered in the BTO Academy. We're currently in five counties across the state, and as I shared earlier, working to continue to expand, to be able to truly be a statewide resource for leaders across our state. As we look ahead, there are a number of strategic opportunities. One, of course, is to continue to expand, with a particular focus on serving our school communities in rural, as well as those school leaders who are serving underserved populations of students. We are continuing to increase the number of best-in-class trainers that we have, which will enable us to be able to continue to scale and expand, continuing to lean into the public-private partnership model, which has been a really useful way to be able to support schools, to make the investment in the training. And the last point that I'd like to make is that ultimately, what the Center for the Future of Arizona would like to see, and what this work is really about, is about the systems transformation that enables all students to succeed at high levels, recognizing the critical role that school leadership plays in that, and seeing the opportunity in Arizona to have a cohesive system of education, leadership, preparation, and ongoing development that could be inclusive of the BTO Academy as one aspect. And there are a number of states, Pennsylvania, for example, that have done work in that way, and that we would welcome to continue that conversation at a, at a future point in time. Thank you again. We're grateful for the opportunity to share the work, and really grateful for our BTO colleagues to be able to take the time to join us today. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, members?
No questions.
Any comments?
Just a comment. About 11 years ago, we were trying to, we'd gone through this downturn, and we just kind of had to turn things around. And a friend of mine brought me a little book, and it was Beat the Odds. And I read through that, and I said, "This is it." And I didn't know anything about it, but we began to use that model, and it turned things around for us. And then later on, we had one of our leaders attend one of your, I think, first sessions. And it was, it was, it was incredible. It was good work that you folks do.
Thank you.
So, congratulations.
Thank you.
So, I feel like I should say something, since I'm involved in the program. And it is pretty intense. I'm, I really love it. And what I love the most, right with, with my cohort, we've also included one of our Pinal County supervisors and a town assistant manager for Florence. And that way, we're able to kind of bring the community together so that we can really focus in and hone in on some strategy on what to do in our county, and how to really kind of move forward with the same plan. So, I'm really excited to continue with it, and so glad you guys came to Pinal County.
Well, thank you.
Yep.
I'm particularly impressed with the ability to partner so that the experiences in the Teachers Academy count toward progress to a graduate degree for students. The partnership with NAU is something that I'm very proud of. So, thank you for your work there.
And it's mutual. We're really grateful. And it's a huge signal for school leaders that this is part of building, again, that larger system of professional development, and that all of us that are working in this space are looking at opportunities for collaboration. So, thank you.
One quick question. Can you just talk a bit about your expansion into northern Arizona?
Yes. So, about a year ago, we were able to expand into northern Arizona. Critical in that, so the work, the way in which we're expanding is through partnership, and also really working with communities that have a desire and are ready to do this deep learning together as a community of learners, and to improve some specific goals. So, in northern Arizona, our lead partner there was Launch Flagstaff and NAU, which really created the conditions to be able to bring a cohort, which is 22 to 25 aspiring and current leaders, to be able to, to come together. And through that, we actually have faculty from NAU who are engaging as full participants of the BTO Academy. And we're also exploring where there might be opportunities to continue to meet the needs of our students in our Native American communities, and looking at how we can ensure that the curriculum is culturally responsive, able to be delivered, especially in rural and remote areas. So, it's really just the start of what we think will be incredible work to come.
Any other comments or discussion? Thank you very much. We appreciate all the good work. Yeah. And appreciate all the other speakers that came up to speak to this as well. The results are impressive. We'll move on to Item 5B, which, again, is an information-only presentation. Superintendent Dennis Goodwin and Keith Kenny of Simon Consulting, would you please provide an update to the board on Murphy's receivership status?
Good morning, President Narducci, and by Superintendent Hoffman and board members. Thank you for giving us the opportu, am I too far? Thank you for giving us the opportunity to update you regarding the progress that has been made at Murphy Elementary School since being placed in receivership on June 28th, 2018. My name is Keith Kenny from Simon Consulting, and I'm here today representing Peter Davis as receiver of the district. With me today is Superintendent Dr. Dennis Goodwin, and Business Manager from, for Murphy School District, Jim Servin. As you know, the district was placed into receivership for overspending their, in June 20, on June 28th, 2013. At that time, it was unknown exactly how much they had overspent. Ultimately, it was determined they had overspent $513,425. And when the receiver was placed, took over, they, their initial evaluation was that the district was on a trajectory for the following year to spend another 500, overspend their budget by another 500 to a million dollars. We immediately hired a new superintendent, new business manager, and curriculum, director of curriculum. With that team, and the superintendent working together, we immediately took measures to reduce staff, reduce employee stipends, over, some overhead costs. And we also ultimately ended up moving the students from Murphy Elementary to one of the three other elementaries. This is because we found that, that, over the years, the district had had a number of declining students, and the district could not support four schools. In addition, Murphy had some other issues with the school that we found, so that was why that school was, was closed down for the, temporarily. As a result of all these measures, instead of overspending the budget for the fiscal year, we were able to reduce the overspent amount by 300,000, with the, ultimately ending with 213,000 going into this year of overspent funds from the prior year. We, we had made additional staff reductions and anticipations of some reduction in student enrollment for this year, although we underestimated the reduction, and there was some additional, so we had to revise our budget in December of this year. The challenges we have are the reduction in student enrollment, and we have, the district has extremely high special education costs. Those two are our biggest challenges of overcoming deficits. But we are, we are on, right now, plan on budget to, to pay back the complete 213,000 by the end of this year, subject to some of these special costs. And currently, are anticipating, petitioning the board to release the district from the receivership status sometime in the 2021 year, school year. And with that, in addition to all the financial changes that we've made, a number of, there's been a number of changes to the school itself. And since the, since the receivership, the district has implemented a number of changes that, which Dr. Goodman is going to provide you with some of those changes in a minute. In addition to the district, the district has adopted a new vision, mission statement, and core values that aligns with the direction of the district. The district believes that the success of the students involves a community effort, including not only the teachers, but the students, parents, and community. As such, Dr. Goodman and the district has not only brought PTO back to the individual schools, but has formed both a teacher advisory committee and a student advisory, advisory committee, which meets with Dr. Goodman on a monthly, Goodman on a monthly basis. In addition, Dr. Goodwin has taken on teaching an advanced math class, and has personally taken an interest in the student's success. I'd like to now hand the floor over to Dr. Goodman, who will expand on some of the changes and success the district has had since the receivership. Oh, in addition to that, I just wanted to make one more point, come on up, is that, to date, the district has reduced its spending by about 1.2 million, which goes to show that, how much has, reduction has taken place since the receivership. With that, Dr. Goodman?
Thank you.
Thank you, President Narducci, and Superintendent Hoffman, and members. You know, one of the things that has been kind of a surprise at Murphy is how many passionate people we have. I know that one of your members was a teacher there, and that's, and they understand that. And it's been a true blessing. But one of the things that we did during our strategic planning was we set up that passionately making a difference for our kids. And so, now, every single teacher and every staff member now has one of these shirts with the focus that we work hand-in-hand with our kids and our community. One of the things that we did was we built up our district partner relationships. Again, this had gone by the wayside with Valley the Sun, United Way, Phoenix Rescue Mission, and in particular, GCU, Grand Canyon University. And previously, Grand Canyon had been keeping practicum and student teachers significantly involved at Murphy. And unfortunately, for actions that occurred, that relationship was broken. So, I'm happy to say that we have practicum and student teachers now back from GCU. So, the relationship is building back up again very well. They are also part of our strategic planning team. We brought in community partners and business members, teachers, staff members, administration, and we are creating our strategic plan moving forward. We want ownership across the board, not just being passionate, but we want everybody in the district to have an ownership for. As you know, we closed Garcia. That was not an easy thing to do, but when you look at the environmental aspect of it, and our enrollment, it was significantly needed to be done. And we relocated those students just over a year ago now to Cuban and Sullivan, and that transition is done very well. One of the things I want to focus on is the fact that, when you make as many cuts, oftentimes, the classrooms suffer. And one of the things that we have made sure of is the classrooms have not. We have cut areas outside of the classroom. I flattened out the organization, and I want to keep it that way, because I want as many dollars go in the classroom as possible. And there was progression already from fiscal 17 to fiscal 18, and I'm anxious to see fiscal 19 results as well. We've expanded our professional development, I mean, fundamental things that teachers need. We've added more professional development days throughout the year. They had pretty much been stopped. Libraries have been closed. We now have libraries open. We actually have, in partnership with Stanford Children, we have a meeting this Friday with an organization from Princeton University that went to come out and look at fully funding opportunities at our libraries. We currently staffed two of them, but our third one, we just have part-time coverage. So, we would, we've added thousands of books into libraries. We would like to add more. It's kind of interesting. We did a, we did a pilot with smart panels, and that, it's a technology that allows the teacher to take our curriculum and integrate it in with their, their computer and the Chromebooks for the students. And we brought in new metric software for testing the students, and that teacher had 143% growth with his kids. So, this next year, we're bringing in more smart boards, excuse me, smart panels, they're not smart boards, to actually expand opportunities for more of our students. On average, sadly, our kids are about two years behind. And so, our focus is to prepare them and get them better prepared for the next level. We have added math and ELA. As I said, we have new metrics that we are now integrating in. This year, the committee has just approved last week, and making a recommendation to our school board, a new social studies curriculum, so we'll have those three. And combined with the science center curriculum that we have, we are going to do a more of a kinesthetic science lab experiment type of class coursework that we're going to do. And I also then want to talk a little bit about some more of the things that our capital overrides are going for. We are using that for curriculum, we're using it for technology, expanding our backbone technology, updating our facilities. We don't need any buses right now, thankfully. But we went from 350,000 in override to 500,000, and it's interesting to watch how quickly that goes away when $500,000, and it's interesting to watch how quickly that goes away when you're talking curriculum and technology. So it's all being put to good use, and we're going to continue to expand that. I want to do a quick acknowledgement of our board. Sorry. In May, quit. In May, our three board members, our acting board president, Newingham, took over, and if you are aware, you probably were filled in about some of the challenges our board had to face. And I'm so impressed. I'm sorry. What they've endured and how they've stabilized the board, the board meetings, the process, the relationship between administration and board. We have submitted two more names to the county superintendent. They were interviewed a few weeks ago. We're excited to get them added. They'll all be, I mean, all of them graduated from Murphy Schools, all of them had their children graduate from Murphy Schools. One of me has their grandchildren at Murphy Schools. So it's really going to be nice to have four board members again, or excuse me, five. But it's been very impressive to watch the way those three have endured what they did through the election because they were attacked, but they stood strong and they stood beside Murphy. So I want to commend them, and if you ever have a chance to come out to Murphy and see them, meet them, I think that you should acknowledge their passion in serving the district the way we have. So thank you for the time, sir.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Members. Superintendent Hoffman.
Good to see you again, Superintendent Goodman. I was wondering, this might be a question for Alicia too, in terms of, because it seems like the district is getting through this checklist of what they need to do to exit receivership, so do we have an estimate of when that might, when we might be at a place to be able to get there?
President Narducci, Superintendent Hoffman, I believe Keith Kenny said by 2021, they should be out of receivership. There are some different statutory things that we need to do and ensure of, including you as of our compliance.
Okay. Sounds like you guys are really making really good progress, and I'm really happy to hear that you're getting stability in the board and having that community involvement, community engagement. Also happy to hear all the reports about just the safety of the schools and, you know, having the funding from the school facilities board to be able to make sure the school facilities are safe for everyone to be in. So overall, just really happy to hear these updates and hope we can keep continuing on that path.
Thank you. Member Burton.
My question has to do with the board. So you have submitted two names. What's the timeline for when you expect to have a full board?
President Narducci, Member Burton, I do not know. I was informed last week that that was being imminent, and I am hoping it's very soon. What I'm hoping for is our March board meeting that we will have five members attending that one, so that is our anticipation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody? Member Reese.
Yeah, President Narducci, Superintendent Hoffman, members. So your three, who are your three board members? Because it's important to recognize them, and then I'll say a comment.
That's fine. President Narducci and members. Angela Newingham was the acting board president. Pinky Baca, Regina Baca, she goes by Pinky Baca, and then our new board member, our board president, her name is Ruby Torres. She took over in January. So, you know, I'm really impressed with the strength of these three young ladies, and their passion for our kids is evident, and they come and see me a lot. They visit, they ask questions, and they really want to make sure they're prepared for their meeting. So it's a nice, as a superintendent, you know, that relationship with the board is so critical. And to have three that were all appointed, two have been re-elected, to have gone through that and then learned and gone through the ASBA trainings, the Bolt trainings, the, we brought training into our office, they've been soaking it up as best they can, but they're right on task, and so it's been a pleasure working with them. So agreed. Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, President Narducci, Superintendent Hoffman, members, you know, you hear around the community lots of, lots of good stuff, and, you know, that you're heading in the right direction. And I think, I think Ruby was one of my students like a lifetime ago, so.
President Narducci, she actually did graduate from Garcia, and she taught at Garcia, and then she went and got a law degree, and now she's a lawyer in the valley here. So she is a product of it. Her mom still lives in the same house that she grew up in.
Thank you. Anybody else? Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your passion as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent.
We'll move on to, I believe, Superintendent, I believe Dr. Chang will be coming back after she has her conference. I don't think she left for good, did she? I think she's coming back.
Yes, I think she is.
Yeah. How about if we take a break at 11:30? Does that work? 11:30 for 10 minutes? Is that okay? Okay.
You're the president.
But I have to ask you. Check with the members. We'll move on to item 5C, and Director Williams.
President Narducci, Superintendent Hoffman, members of the board. Item 5C is a presentation, discussion, and possible action to approve the Accountability Assistant Business Rules for school year 2018, 2019. From the executive summary sheet, the business rules are kept in draft form until the accountability season has concluded. Season meaning the release of letter grades, the appeals process, the board finalizes the appeals, everything's updated. And this allows for additional clarifying notes and the addition of descriptive statistics. At the end of each document, there are footnotes of clarification and updates from the original date the rules are released, as well as final statistics. I do believe Wendy Davies here, if there are any particular questions in regard to the business rules, the recommendation is to approve the 1819 AAF Accountability Business Rules as attached.
Thank you, Director Williams. Members, any questions or comments or discussion? Member Kay.
President Narducci, Superintendent Hoffman, members, and forgive me if this has come up before us before and I just missed it. I'm wondering why we approve it after the fact, and what happens as changes are made to the formula? Does this document get updated at that point? So how quickly after changes are made does it get updated?
President Narducci, Superintendent Hoffman, member Kay. If you actually, what we do is, when we get everything approved, we roll the business rules over. At that time, we have not ran all the numbers as far as what the state average is, so that's why it first starts out as a draft. If you look at the end of the business rules, Alicia, if you guys want, I guess I can open up one. What we do is, it's not that things are changing, that we're providing clarification in when we do updates. So at the very end, these are the only things that we updated through the process of when we first let them be released so that schools could start calculating. So in most cases, it's a clarification. So as you know, 95% change because of the state assessment, so we would get questions from the field and realize that if we just changed some wording, it would be a little bit more clear for the field. So you will see probably most of these up here are updated for the state averages once we had them, or clarification on the wording so that the field better understood. And then we keep it in draft so that at the end, we are able to put in these histograms, because this actually allows a school or a district to sit down with their leadership teams. And in this case, if you knew, this looks like it's total points, if you knew your total points were about 66, you could actually see on a statewide histogram where you actually fell in the entire state. So it gives you a little bit more chance to do some data-driven decisions and some goal setting as a district and a school.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Wendy? Any other, Jill?
So I just, I don't want it to appear to the field that we are changing the playbook mid-season, right? So couldn't we approve them ahead of time and add your histograms and that data after, afterwards, or amend if we need to later? I just want, I hate using the term draft business rules because then the field thinks, well, then we have the ADE and the state board have the freedom to change it in the middle. And so that's my concern.
President Narducci, Member Rissard, it was practice, it's been a practice, if that's the way it was done, but again, since we know we're not changing, quote, the business rules, but just updating them in the process, we could. We do not want to tag it as final, because in essence, we do want to make sure everything's in there before final, but we can remove the draft. But we still encourage districts and LEAs to make sure that they're going and they're looking at any recent updates, and we refer them back should, when we add the special ed. numbers or the state averages, that they realize that those will be, they'll be blank. And so we don't want to give them the lead that this is the final when we know we still have to add those numbers. So I just want us to be a little wary and cautious of quoting saying final.
So with that.
I have a question.
Yes. Go ahead.
I have a question. This is Member Wellborn. Would it be possible to perhaps, in light of, you know, trying to distinguish between what rules are as schools go into the testing season, sort of say, you know, put a disclosure on that says current as of X date, whatever the date is, and then when you actually go through and do the analysis and clarifying work, then you could then say, you know, finalized as of X date, so that people understand that what version they're looking at, and it's dated.
That's, those are good comments. Should be dated already, should be dated all the way along, but reference it as current. And current means, in my mind, current means the same thing as draft, but, so you can say it's current, and then at the end of timing, which we would have here, we would just make it final. Is that pretty much what we're talking about?
I think that would give a better impression to the field of how, of how it works, that we're not changing things midstream.
All right. Catcher, would be all right with that? Okay. All right, let's, want to make sure Catcher's awake.
He was quick with the thumbs up.
Wasn't following all the legislation that's going on. So, okay, so with that, we'll take that for the future and go forward with that. Good.
President Narducci, Superintendent Hoffman, members, I was just going to, just to caveat and add on is to ensure that we're really looking at the statute to make sure that whatever we do doesn't have unintended consequences down the line and making sure that we're complying with everything that's written.
Yep. Good points. Anything else, members? All right, with that, do I have a motion to approve the 2018, 2019 AAF Accountability Business Rules as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Jill. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion by Cal, a second by Cal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
There we go. Thanks. Thank you, Patricia. No opposed?
Catcher was much quicker.
It, motion passes. Thank you. And thanks for the comments, and thank you, Wendy. Move on to item 5D. Director Williams.
President Narducci, item 5D, more than likely will be a very long discussion, so would you like to take a break now?
Yeah, we'll take a break now until about 10:30. Yeah, we'll take a break now until about 10:30. Okay, we'll start our meeting again. Think everybody's back?
I don't believe so.
Is gonna be back, for now. Except for Director Williams. Director Williams told us to start, but we can't start. She's not here. Oh, here she is.
President Narducci, keep this up, I'm just gonna take these days off.
I'm sorry. We appreciate you, even though sometimes it doesn't look like it. Thank you, Director Williams. We'll move on to 5D, and we'll turn it over to you.
Perfect. President Narducci, Superintendent Hoffman, members of the board, item 5D is a continuation of items that were discussed at the January State Board meeting in Yuma. If you recall, the board had a very robust conversation around the Acceleration Readiness Indicator and setting that eighth grade math to a 2.5 for increasing highly proficient student scores and a 2.5 points for decreasing minimally proficient. The board requested, after that vote, the board requested that the department staff and board staff look at setting thresholds for the increasing highly proficient and decreasing minimally proficient. Those thresholds were provided to you and your documents for this board meeting. The second point from the January State Board of Education meeting was that the board tabled any discussion on the special education bonus points. To just clarify, right now, our special education bonus points sit at 80% of the statewide average. There was a request to look at 60%, lowering that to 60% of the statewide average. The department ran some numbers for that. Additionally, from the January board meeting, we were asked to include a tiered system. So you have, in your materials, you have the staggered tiered system, Model A, and you have a tiered system, Model B, as well as your 80% and your 60% thresholds. I do anticipate the board to have some discussion today on not just the eighth grade math thresholds, but also the special education bonus point thresholds. I would really push the board to try to make a decision today so that we can conclude the accountability system for the 1920 and 2021 school year, and that would allow for the Department of Education staff and the State Board staff and ATAC and double ATAC to start working on the 2122 school year, which would give us about 18 months for a new accountability system to fuse with the new statewide assessment system. So with that, I'm available for questions. Wendy and Carrie are here as well to answer any questions any board members may have.
Thank you, Director Williams. Cal? No? Oh, you're just looking at me, okay.
How did you know?
Sorry, Cal.
President Narducci, members of the board, do you want to do with these one at a time?
Yeah, SPED versus, yes.
Okay. I'd like to suggest that in terms of the eighth grade math thresholds that we approve 60% as the threat, as the threshold for increasing highly proficient, and 10% as the threshold for decreasing minimally proficient for the school years 2019, 20, and 2021. And I can make that as a motion if that's what you're prepared for.
I will be prepared for that motion. Is there any discussion regarding those points or anything different that anybody wants to propose? Hearing none? Cal, could you present that motion?
I have.
Oh, Patricia. Member Wellborn, go ahead.
Um, I'm concerned about making this change when we won't really know what the numbers will look like with the new testing. Once we have all eighth graders taking the same math tests, it's definitely going to impact the proficiency numbers. Point number one. And point number two, I'm concerned that we're trying to find more ways to award points when I don't know that the system is providing the incentives for schools to improve sufficiently towards meeting the goals of the Arizona Progress Meter. So, right now, eighth grade students in Arizona, we have a 41% proficiency number, and the goal within 10 years is to raise that to 69%. So that's a 20-point increase. And by giving more schools an opportunity to, I would suggest that the bonus system should be aligned toward moving the proficiency number rather than the highly proficient number. And if we're gonna stick with the highly proficient number, again, it should be those who are outstanding above the norm. If we set it as low as 60%, we're giving points to half the schools, and I don't know if half the schools are advancing their eighth graders towards the progress meter.
Thank you, Member Wellborn. Member Baker.
President Narducci, Member Wellborn, just to make sure I was understood correctly, I suggested 60%, not 50%. And currently, 99.5% of schools are below the 60 percentile, so this is a very high bar, and it's still is gonna require schools to stretch. But it at least, but it's important to realize that the system was never intended, just as we never intended for all students to take Algebra I as eighth graders, it's not realistic to expect that every student is gonna be highly proficient. So there should be some kind of a mark that schools can make that is high, but not impossible. And I think this sets it, and I agree with Member Wellborn, that we're gonna have different data next year, and maybe we need to look at it and make some adjustments, but this is a really good start.
Thank you. Good discussion. Anyone else? Superintendent Hoffman?
Thank you, President Narducci, members of the board. Just one quick comment, I guess, based about the test. We're not gonna have the new, completely new test until, the kids will not be taking it until 2022, the spring of 2022. So just keep that in mind, that we have the, while we renamed the test to the AZM II, it's a little updated, but I wouldn't think about it as like an entirely new test. I just want to make sure we're thinking about it that way.
Thank you. Okay, could we entertain a motion?
President Narducci?
Yes, Member Wellborn?
President Narducci?
Yes.
I apologize, I failed to make one other point, I'd like the opportunity to do that. I'd like us to think about what is a significant decrease or increase. Given that we're so far away from trying to hit the 10-year goal on the progress meter, right now, a 0.01% improvement qualifies for getting this bonus. So is there any merit to the idea of saying, well, we want, we really want to reward significant progress? I mean, you might have, you know, one student or two students difference, and that would give you your 0.01% increase on the highly proficient side, or your 0.01 decrease on the minimally proficient side, and they may not really be significant improvements.
And so what would you be, what would you be proposing?
I would say that when we measure a decrease or an increase, it has to be at least a half a percentage point. And that's a somewhat arbitrary number, to be honest, because I haven't seen it, I don't have any of the data to know how the data is distributed.
And if we were to change that number to the half a percentage point, we'd have to run a whole different, we'd have to run a whole different assessment and analysis of what we've run already to get to different percentages, et cetera, to see how that would play out across the board, I would think.
Yeah, it would be helpful to know if it makes a meaningful difference to schools earning points.
I think, I mean, my suggestion would be that we could put that on a to-do list to analyze as we go forward, and then actually move forward with what we need to move forward with at this point, if we get a motion, and then assess that at a later date, if that's okay. All right.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you. If we can get, if we have a motion, could we have one in line here?
President Narducci, I move that the State Board of Education approve 60% as a threshold for increasing highly proficient and 10% as a threshold for decreasing minimally proficient for the school years 2019, 20, and 2021.
Thank you, Member Baker. Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
I have a second by Member Mack. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. We'll move on to SPED. Is there any further discussion from Director Williams regarding SPED? Or the district, I'm sorry, the district, the department, before we ask for discussion?
President Narducci, I believe we're both available if there's any questions pertaining to my original talking points on special education. But again, I do suspect that the board will have a discussion around special education bonus points today.
All right, we'll open it up for discussion, members. Any comments? Member Baker?
President Narducci, members of the board, I'd like to suggest that we approve the staggered Model A, and I think there's two reasons for that, or like to suggest two reasons for my advocacy. One is, this is all very difficult and complex, but at the very least, we should do no harm. And I think we are doing harm to school districts in some of the counties that have a very low special education, average special education at a damnification rate. And then secondly, I'd like to advocate for the tiered model, because although others have said that a tier model increases the incentive for over-identifying special ed, I'd like to suggest that actually, I think research shows just the opposite. If you have a very steep cliff, then it becomes easier to rationalize, oh my goodness, if I don't, you know, if I identify one or two more special ed kids, I gain two points. Whereas if it's tiered, I might say, well, at least I'm getting one and a half. I'm not getting the full two, but I'm getting one and a half. And it actually decreases the incentive to over-identify. So I, that's what I'd like to suggest. And again, I'd be prepared to make a motion on that.
Thank you, Member Baker. Anyone else? Okay.
Superintendent, excuse me, President Narducci, Superintendent Hoffman, members, I have some concerns about the staggered model and about lowering it. Initially, when we talked, it seemed that we were concerned about rural schools, and while there are some outliers in the data that we were given, I think it's unlikely in the future that if we learn more, we're going to go back and make an adjustment the other way if we learn more about this information. And that's what I think we ought to do. I feel like we should continue to study the counts by county, leave the system as-is, and look, really delve into the data and look at what makes the most sense. Because there's also an argument, as I've said before, that schools that are serving at or above the state average are being penalized or maybe perhaps not duly rewarded, but for their efforts in this work either. So my preference would be to leave the system as-is and to continue to study the model.
Member Mack?
President Narducci, Superintendent Hoffman, members, I was similar to Member K, struggling between the two, because we had a hypothesis that perhaps it was due to the rules and we did the count by county, the data doesn't support or uphold what we thought or anticipated seeing, and in fact, it seems to show that pretty much every single one would get, would get the points under the existing system. I can see the rationale with staggered Model A as well. And I understand we do not want to do harm, but at the same time, I feel like then who are those additional schools getting that 6%? getting that 6% and that 8%? And I also feel like with Member K, that's my next question, is who would be the ones getting the additional points then, if we were to do the staggered model? And is it who we would anticipate? So, I don't know, I have enough of more questions than an actual conclusion at this point as well.
Do we want to address some of this discussion? And with point to actually get some of this, is it possible to get some of it?
So, President Narducci, members of the board, I would say to Dr. Mack's point of who those schools are, the board, since I've been working the board, the board never sees the names of schools when we do modeling, because that would just not be appropriate to make decisions based upon who those schools are specifically. But characteristically, I think we've done that in the past.
President Narducci, Superintendent Hoffman, Dr. Member Mack. We have, we look at it at the technical advisory team. What we have not done, which would require a significant amount of modeling, would be to take the staggering and apply it by county and look at that impact. That's significant amount of coding, and we were waiting for the direction to do that. You see the counties that we gave you, that's an overall number. We would then have to break it down by 912 and K8, which we have those numbers for you today, if you would like to know what they are, but we did not have them for you with a package. So that's another layer, you would have cut points for K8, 912, you would have that staggered, and then you'd have it staggered by county. To actually get those numbers back to you, we would need some time.
And President Narducci, to Wendy's point, I do recall at the January board meeting, I did tell the board that anything, any modeling in regard to the county percentages would really have to be studied, not for this current school year or next year, but for 21, 22.
So with, thank you, thank you. So hearing the discussion here, if we were not to take a motion on this to move forward, what's the negative impact going forward?
So President Narducci, members of the board, I think in any case, just to kind of close out this conversation that we've been having for a couple months now, if the board decided not to take any action, I probably would still have you do a motion to not take any action and to keep special education bonus threshold at 80%. So it's very clear. So you keep it at 80%, which is what it's been at. The board can lower the threshold to 60%, but no one has brought that up today. Member Baker has brought up the staggered Model A, so that's another option. So you can vote to keep it at 80%, you can vote to change it to a staggered Model A.
Okay. Member Baker?
President Narducci, members of the board, I think the most significant issue here is the data on the county-by-county averages. And I thank Director Williams for requesting that data and ADE staff for putting it together. It's pretty troubling. I mean, how do we justify that our system, our statewide system is, that we're identifying over twice as many kids as being eligible for, or appropriate, as being identified as special ed in La Paz County as opposed to Greeley County? I mean, do we really believe that there are twice as many, more than twice as many, special ed students in La Paz as in Greeley? And it begs a whole nother set of questions, like, is it across the boards? Or are there twice as many deaf kids in La Paz as there are in Greeley? Autistic kids? Where are those numbers coming from? That shouts for attention. And so I would, I would suggest that the board request ADE and our staff to look into that further and get us additional information. Meantime, we have, you know, schools in Greeley County who have no competition. There's no other school near them, public, or traditional public, or charter public, even private. So they are doing what they are supposed to do. They are taking every single special ed kid that's coming to them. But we're, but they can't get the bonus points unless they cheat. That's the only option we are giving them. And that's why I say, at the very least, we should be doing no harm. So let's, let's take care of that problem, and then look at the, at the elephant in the room, and that is why, is there such disparity from county to county?
So I'm leaning with Cal to move forward with, if he pulled that motion together, but then also with having the study done, so that we can actually make more informed decisions as we move along. So with that said, if we could entertain a motion, Cal?
President Narducci?
Oh, yes, Member Welborn.
I'm sorry, I'd like to make some comments before we consider a vote. I'm concerned on this, on this issue, that we've wandered a little bit away from what I thought this whole part of the accountability model represented. And in my mind, it's called bonus points for a reason. It's really sort of to recognize those who are above and beyond in carrying, in carrying the load here, and because of all the extra work and costs and the impacts on academics all the way around. So we're spending a lot more focus on those below the 100% of average than we are looking at those above, who are doing a lot more of the, carrying a lot more of the load, which I thought was the intent, to have a bonus section. I'm concerned about lowering the bar, and awarding points for below 80% because it's not about, it's rewarding for people that are not even, you know, doing their fair share. And they are, and perhaps we don't know enough about how SED numbers change from district to district, to understand this. And how do we, how do we really provide an incentive for schools, not an incentive, how do we reward them for carrying the extra load, rather than more ways to award points that are, people that are below the average? So I'm not at all in favor of lowering the bar. And I do agree with the idea that the SPED numbers divided by county really starts to beg some more questions about what's the distribution and why there'd be significant variations by county? And maybe there's huge variations by district. So that would be worth, I would, you know, I would support doing more study on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Welborn. Member K?
President Narducci, Superintendent Hoffman, members. While I am not necessarily in favor of lowering the threshold, I do see Member Baker's points in terms of those couple of counties. So when I look at the options that are left, I would prefer Model B. It does address those that are at the state average or higher by redistributing the points. They would get the full two. Then 80% to the state average would be 1.5. So you would, in essence, be lowering on the one end and also acknowledging the work of those who are carrying a disproportionate caseload. So that would be my preference. If we're going to move to lower it, would be to go with the staggered Model B.
Thank you. Do we have further discussion regarding that, B versus, B versus A? Member Baker?
President Narducci, members of the board, unless I'm seeing this or understanding this incorrectly, the staggered Model B actually increases the bar in that schools, in order to get, schools that are, that are earning 80 to 90, who are at 80 to 90%, help me if I'm, you can explain it better than I can, Wendy, but it is actually requiring a higher threshold, correct?
President Narducci, Superintendent Hoffman, Member Baker, and members. We've got the document in there that might be helpful. That is the one, all the others were sort of a hold harmless, they would stay at around 69, 80, 60. The member, the final one that you're talking, staggered B, we have a graph on there, and you would actually see a decrease in letter grades for .77, not even a full percent, but if you're that school. But 97.8 would not change at all, and about 1.42 would see an increase. So we did do a little bit more letter grade change on that staggered B, because we knew that 69 would go down to, I believe it's 49%, for those that would get full points.
Thank you. And so, you know, I don't think there was ever any discussion from the board to actually make it more difficult.
Right.
And so that's, that's why I maintain my support for A.
So that's why, that's why you're characterizing A as a do no harm?
Right.
Okay. And is your assessment of it different? And when I say your assessment, I'm talking to you.
President Narducci, Superintendent Hoffman. Overall, my concern is that it is lowering, lowering the standard and needs further review. So the concession in my mind was Model B. It does make it harder for that group, but again, I think it redistributes the points in a way that is probably more fair. And they are bonus points.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion regarding that? Superintendent Hoffman?
Thank you, President Narducci, members. This is definitely a tough one, I think we can all acknowledge that. And so I just want to throw in my two cents that after, like, looking through all of this and thinking about it, I would have two preferences. One, to either hold the system the same as Member K was discussing, because, you know, one thing we hear from the field often is that with the A through F system, it keeps changing, and the targets keep changing, and that can be confusing for the field to keep up with every, you know, for making changes on a month-to-month basis. So I'm very conscious of any tweaks to the system. So on the one hand, would be happy to hold on with the existing system and continue to do research. And I think that significant changes should be rolled out with the new assessment in about, over the next couple of years. So that's one way. But then I also, coming from special education and thinking about diagnosis and over-diagnosis and under-diagnosis of kids with disabilities, and thinking about that a staggered system would make sense for not having incentives one way or the other, that of course, we would encourage for there to be robust, comprehensive assessments and intervention systems in place for the system to be working and to not have these large discrepancies between having high rates of diagnosis and identification versus low rates, that we want to, you know, have consistency and have a good system in place statewide. So I also can see the benefits to having a staggered system, so we're not incentivizing one way or the other in terms of identification of kids with disability. So I'm just going to leave my two cents there for discussion.
Thank you, good two cents.
I'm compelled by the notion of do no harm and would support staggered Model A.
Thank you, Dr. Core. Member Burton? Okay, any other comments? Can I have a motion? Member Baker?
I move that the, let me find it here. I move that the State Board of Education approve staggered Model A for special education bonus points for the school year 1920 and 21. Further, that the State Board of Education direct the Department of Education and the State Board staff to look into the significant disparities of special ed identification from one county to the next, and bring the board information on that, including a breakdown by category of how those identifications are different.
Thank you. Member Baker, do we have that motion written down now?
We're good.
Okay, very good. With that motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
You have a second by Member Broussard? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
And the nays are, Member Welborn?
President Narducci, we should have a roll call vote.
Okay, thank you.
So going back to the motion, Member Baker made the motion seconded by Member Broussard. So Member Baker, your vote, please.
Yes.
Member Broussard?
Yes.
Member Burton?
Aye.
Dr. Chang? Member K?
Nay.
Member Mack?
Nay.
Member Ruiz?
No.
Member Welborn?
No.
Superintendent Hoffman?
Yes.
Vice President Core?
Yes.
President Narducci?
Yes.
By a vote of six to four, the motion passes.
Thank you. And thanks for the discussion. We'll move on to item 5E, Director Williams.
President Narducci, Superintendent Hoffman, members of the board, item 5E is a presentation, discussion, and possible action regarding the A through F accountability system for the Arizona Online Instruction Schools, also known as AOI schools. At the January board meeting, we were directed to put out a survey, which we did, and which we got feedback. And if you notice on your executive summary sheet for item 5E, there were some changes for the FED definition, for the graduation rate. Again, the motion for this agenda item is just to direct AOI schools to provide data to the department so that we can do modeling, and therefore have an accountability system for this board to decide upon in the fall. Doesn't mean that the business rules that are currently here are going to stick in stone. We may, through our data collection process, determine that adjustments need to be made. And when that occurs, we'll bring it back to this board. So again, the motion on this item is to direct the AOI schools to provide their data.
Thank you, Director Williams. Any discussion or comments with respect to 5E? Seeing none, do I have a motion to direct AOIs to report to their CCRI data, to report their CCRI data to ADE and monitor and correct their A to F data, data as directed by ADE in order to allow for modeling in the fall of 2020 and the presentation of the AOI A through F accountability model for adoption for the 2020 through 2021 school year?
So moved.
Motion by, motion by Member Broussard?
My second.
Taken by Dr. Core, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Move on to item 5F, Director Williams.
President Narducci, members of the board, item 5F is the closing of rulemaking procedures for Article 10 and Article 11 of school district procurement. We have received the letter of approval from the Auditor General's office, so I would recommend taking to a motion unless you have any questions.
Any questions for Director Williams? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close rulemaking procedures on AAC Article 10 and Article 11, school district procurement, and file the rules with the Secretary of State?
So moved.
We have a, we have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Move on to item 5G, Director Williams.
President Narducci? 5G is a presentation and discussion with action to close rulemaking procedures on R7-2-615.01, the special education endorsement.
Any questions for Director Williams or discussion?
Make a comment?
Yes, Superintendent Hoffman?
Thank you, President Narducci, members. Thank you, President Narducci, members. I just want to say this one is really exciting and also both personally and professionally important to me that, you know, we all know that recruitment and retention is very challenging for the field right now, especially for special education teachers. And so essentially, this would help, hopefully help with recruitment because by passing this, it would help if you are already a certified teacher that this creates a more practical plan for if you want to become certified as a special education teacher rather than having to leave the profession and enroll in a completely different program. So I'm hopeful that this could just be one more step in the right direction for helping with recruitment of special education teachers.
Thank you. I second those comments because as an undergrad with an elementary education degree, I wanted to go into special ed, and I was working on my master's, and it was just like, man, how to do that? So, but it worked out. So it worked out quite well. And I was able to get into the school for dyslexic children, and that was even better. So thank you for those comments. I was excited to read it, too. So do I have a motion to close rulemaking procedures on AAC Rule seven dash two dash six fifteen point zero one, special education endorsement?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Move on to five H. Director Williams?
President Narducci, members of the board, item five H is an update on the rulemaking procedures for R seven dash two dash six oh four, R seven dash two dash six oh four point oh three, R seven dash two dash six oh four point oh five, alternative educator prep program approval process. This rule was opened at the January state board meeting, and this is your update. If there are no questions, I would suggest moving to the next agenda item.
Well, thank you for such a good update. We'll move on to the next agenda item. Item five I. Thank you.
President Narducci, members of the board, item five I is a presentation discussion regarding legislative affairs, at which point, if you have any questions, please ask Deputy Director Baden.
Deputy Director Baden, have the floor, please.
President Narducci, Superintendent Hoffman, and members, unless there are any questions, I think I would recommend moving on to the next item.
Okay. Any questions for Director Baden? Yes, Member Welborn?
Okay, I have one question with regard to H two seven four one.
H two seven four one.
I just request that, want to know if there's anything in this legislation that defines what high demand or high wage is?
President Narducci, Member Welborn, so for just a little bit of context for the rest of the members, House Bill twenty-seven forty-one is a proposal to fund the fourth year of CTE funding. Right now, it's just three years, sophomores through seniors, and that was actually something that was peeled back a few years ago. So the proposal is to fund that fourth year. And the proposal, this legislation is actually one of, I think there's another bill in the Senate. This specific legislation limits that funding to, as Member Welborn said, high demand and high wage jobs. Member Welborn, to answer your question, no, the legislation does not specifically state what high demand or high wage is. The expectation in the process outlined in the bill is that it will go through a process with the Office of Economic Opportunity, who provides a lot of that data already to ADE and their CTE unit in terms of ranking what's high wage and what's high demand. And I think they do that every two years. Every year, they do it. And so the expectation and what's outlined in the bill is that they will complete that for ADE, provide ADE with that information. That'll also go through the Quality Skills Commission, which is the commission right now that approves CTE programs, and they will help determine what high demand and high wage is.
So the reason I bring up this issue is because this concept of high wage, high demand was a fundamental principle when the whole CTE program was started fifteen years ago under Governor Napolitano. And I, it's, I don't know that it's ever been defined other than that there is a reference to looking at the economic impact data. And my concern for this, because it's not defined, is we end up with having certifications and credentials coming in on the CCRI that are, where there's a huge disparity between the types of professions that are on that CCR list. So some of the jobs that are minimum wage and relatively low skill, and I use that word very carefully, relatively low skill in the sense that they perhaps require eight hours of online learning versus other types of certification programs that take quite a bit longer, you know, a year, year and a half to get a certification. And that yet, those, and those jobs can sometimes lead to much, much higher wages or, you know, compensation. So I'd really like to see if we can get more study around how this fundamental principle is being applied and what decisions are on, what decisions are made based on the economic impact data that we get and what is the alignment from that to the high demand, high wage, theoretically highly skilled professions? Is that something we can ask for?
Vice President Core, Superintendent Hoffman, and members. Member Welborn, yes, that's, we can look into that some more. I can't necessarily promise that that's something that'll be folded into this legislation. I think, and we've had discussions, we've had stakeholder meetings on this bill that has led into larger discussions about all the things that you brought up with alignment. And we have been and will continue to work with ADE's CTE desk to ensure that there's alignment in those things, and if there are differences, that there's justifiable policy reasons for those differences. But yes, I think that's something that the Legislative Committee has asked for, you know, some interest in ensuring alignment as well. And so we can, we can provide that.
Right. So I appreciate that it might be difficult to impact this particular bill, but I would suggest that there needs to be more specific rulemaking from the State Board about what is high demand, highly skilled, and high wage jobs.
President Narducci and Member Welborn, that's heard. It's, and we'll work on that. It's just a larger conversation. Like I mentioned, we got to work with ADE's CTE unit. We have to work with OEO. And then, of course, with the members at the legislature, we have to work with them, and the Quality Skills Commission, which is a different entity. There's a lot of cooks in the kitchen in terms of working with industry and the K-12 folks. So we're absolutely committed to working on that. It's just, we'll make sure it happens. It's just going to take a little bit of time and coordination with those entities.
Sure. I appreciate you have a lot to tackle at this time. So thank you for that.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion on legislative issues or questions?
Everyone else has left the call. Bye-bye.
Oh, okay. Bye-bye. We'll move on to five J. Thanks for that, catcher. And I know it's a big job keeping up with that circle of issues. I was going to say circus, but I didn't. I didn't say it in the right context anyways. Five J. We will need to enter into executive session to discuss this item as the records are exempt by law from public inspection. Do I have a motion to move into executive session to discuss item five J?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Move into executive session. Thank you. You can be right back. Do we have?
Yes, President Narducci members, we're back on the record at 12:26. And we're on item 5J.
Thank you very much. We're on item 5J, and we are just out of executive session. And do I have a motion to approve the qualifying third-party evaluator as presented in executive session? I have a motion. I'm member back, and I have a second by member Bressaud. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We will move on to item 7. This is time for the public to comment on items.
President Narducci, that you have item 6A?
I missed right over 6, sorry. For item 6A, the Board will convene as the Arizona State Board for Vocational and Technical Education for this item only. Director Williams.
President Narducci, this item before you is to approve the state plan for strengthening career and technical education for the 21st Century Act, which is Perkins 5. We do have people here. If there are any questions, staff did request from the Department of Education, a one-pager which was already provided to all the board members, pretty much sums up the plan. So if there are no questions from board members in regard to this plan, then I would suggest making a motion.
Members of the Board, number Baker.
President Narducci, members of the Board, just one quick question. I understand that there's a lot of federal requirements that have to be met for this plan. And so I'm sure there was some tension between what people wanted to do and what they had to do. What were some, I'm just curious, what were some of those tension points? That make sense?
Maybe my friends from the department can help me out.
Ms. Kathy Raymond.
Good morning, President Narducci, Superintendent Hoffman, Member Baker, and members of the Board. Probably the biggest contention was the split between post-secondary and secondary funding. And we did make some concessions on that also.
Just to clarify, so what was, what was?
Originally, so out of the 100% of the Perkins funding, 15% is set aside for administration and leadership, and the other 85% is for allocations. So we took that 85%. Secondary previously had received 85% of the 85, and the post-secondary 15. So we increased the post-secondary 3% and decreased the secondary 3%.
Thank you.
President Narducci, members, I was wondering, I noticed that the plan was sent to Advanced CTE. Can you tell me a little bit more about them and what comments they provided?
Advanced CTE is the national organization for state CTE directors. And so they received a grant from the Gates Foundation to assemble a team of experts that could look over our plan, give us recommendations. A lot of them, we realized we had to beef up our language concerning post-secondary more than what we had. They had some concerns, and as we read their comments, it seemed like certain people just read a certain section of it because the question they asked here, we actually answered in another section of the plan. So we tried to go through and kind of revise some of those things also. They didn't think our performance measures were quite aggressive, but we looked at the data that we currently had, especially on the academic levels with the science. We had no previous CTE student data on that. So we realized, and those can be changed every year as we go through and finally get some data. Also, on our industry certifications, we've never required our districts to report those before. Now, with the governor's incentive, and also it being a performance measure for Perkins, districts will now start reporting that this year. So we've opened up a data portal where districts can start reporting all their, the approved industry certifications.
That's great news. Thank you for sharing that.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Fantastic. Do I have a motion to approve the state plan for strengthening career and technical education for the 21st Century Act, Perkins 5?
So moved.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now it goes to the governor.
Awesome. None opposed. Motion passes.
President Narducci, before you go into your whole speech about item 7, we do not have any calls to the public for the consent portion of the enforcement.
Said you do not have any.
Do not.
Okay.
But we do have two for nine.
Okay, thank you. We will move on to item 8. Enforcement action on the agenda. The members, we don't have any to take off, correct?
No.
Do not. And for the record, item 8A8 was removed from the agenda prior to the meeting today. Do I have a motion to approve items 8A1 through 8A7?
So moved.
A second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 9, this is the time for public to comment on items on the general session for enforcement actions. We have a three-minute limit on each speaker. Director Williams.
President Narducci, we have two speakers for item 9. We have Bill Holder followed by Kelly Malani.
There's somebody else. Alicia?
Yes.
Director Williams, there's somebody else.
What's up? She's trying to be helpful.
And then Roger Frazier will be third.
Thank you. Yes.
Members of the Board, my name is Bill Holder. I do represent Kelly Malani. She is item 10A5 on your agenda. She's to my right. The Department has agreed to treat this case as a screening matter rather than as a disciplinary matter because the events that led to the complaint being filed against Ms. Malani are, did not involve intentional or even negligent misconduct or even conduct by her, but were the result of a medical condition, which I will explain. What I'm about to tell you comes from a March 2018 letter from Ms. Malani's doctor, which, for reasons unknown to me, are not in your packet, but they are material to the reason why you should approve the settlement agreement. What her doctor's letter tells you is this, is that since about 2005, Ms. Malani has treated for bipolar disorder. In January of 2018, she changed doctors. The, and she was prescribed a new medication. Lamictal is the brand name. Lamotrigine is the generic name. One of its side effects is disorientation. Ms., and she began that medication February 28th. On March 1 of 2018, she experienced the incident described in your materials from the Attorney General's Office. And she had other disorientation episodes. On March 12th, 12 days after starting the medication, she called her doctor, left a voicemail, said she was going to stop the medication, and she did. What she did not know is that abruptly stopping that medication can have serious side effects, including seizures. And indeed, the very next day, March 13th, she was involved in a traffic accident on the way to school in which she did not know where she was or who she was at the time and has no memory of it. The, you should know that the police report does not indicate there was any alcohol or non-prescription drug involvement. This is a result of her abruptly stopping medication that she should have tapered off. Indeed, since that accident, she has tapered off that medication and is continuing on it. She resigned her employment as a teacher in Tucson Unified, has been unemployed for two years. In the meantime, her fingerprint occurrence card was suspended and has now been reactivated. What you, what in addition you should know is that if you approve the settlement agreement, it will have two effects. Number one, her certificate will be suspended until her application for renewal is granted, if it's granted. Right now, it's still in effect. Number two, and more importantly, if you approve the settlement agreement, that doesn't mean she gets her certificate back. She will then appear in front of the PPAC as a screening matter with a letter from her doctor verifying that she's treating successfully, and she'll come before you again. I just have one other request, and that is that if you have questions in your discussion of the Department's lawyer, that you allow me to respond as well. Thank you.
Next up, we have Kelly Malani, followed by Roger Frazier.
Members, thank you for listening to me. On the morning of March 13th, 2018, I awoke strapped to a hospital bed. I was groggy and surrounded by police and nurses, not knowing why I was there or believing that it was real. I had and still have no recollection of that morning prior to waking up at the hospital. Three weeks earlier, I had been prescribed a new psychiatric medication for my bipolar disorder called Lamictal or Lamotrigine. The new psychiatric medication was prescribed by my psychiatrist, Tracy Postner, P.A. The side effects that I was told I could have was the slothing of the skin, nothing that had to do with disorientation that could affect driving. I experienced bouts of confusion on the medication, leading me to do things that were out of character. Finally, on the day before the accident, I called and left a message from my doctor after having a 45-minute challenge of opening my PowerPoint program. I received a message back but did not hear until the day after the accident. It is said not to go off the drugs cold turkey, but to taper off. I knowingly stopped taking the medication. The accident could have been caused either by the new medication that caused disorientation and confusion, or a reaction to stopping the medication abruptly causing a seizure. I am no longer on that medication. My doctor is prescribing new medications that have kept me stable since October of 2018 through today. I had no idea that taking myself off the medication would be detrimental or would cause the situation. I learned that the two students affected by the accident suffered minor injuries, and although it did not require any hospitalization or loss of school time, I am so very sorry. I deeply understand the gravity of this situation. I am grateful that the worst did not happen. I will never forgive myself for affecting those young ladies' lives negatively in any way. I have been a teacher for 17 years, only hoping to positively affect students' lives. I am asking you to approve the settlement agreement. I understand that this means that my certificate will be suspended until it is renewed, if it is renewed. I understand that I will be able to reapply anytime after February 27, 2020, and that when I do, I need to provide documentation from my doctor that I am successfully following my treatment program with the new medication, and that I will be screened by the PPAC, subject to approval by this Board. Thank you.
Last up, we have Roger Frazier.
Mr. President, members of the Board, thank you. I'm Roger Frazier. I'm the attorney for the person whose item 10B2, I believe it is, Mr. Jose Jimenez. He's sitting in the back of the room today also. If, we don't have a settlement offer from the Board, so it's not that kind of a situation. They recommended revocation. But I wanted to talk to you for a couple things about that. In this particular case, which had to do with texting to a student, he acknowledged in the transcript that you have there, I won't go outside of that, that looking back now, he realizes he should have stopped that much sooner. He thought he was helping, he was trying to help, wasn't trying to do harm. He's taught for, this was just his second year as a, previous to that, he was a substitute a long time ago, but this was his second regular year. And in that hearing, he could not admit all of those allegations, but he admitted a lot of them. And the point is, is that he showed remorse and acknowledges a failure in judgment, and you know, he wants to get better and not do that and improve. But when the PPAC, I guess if I'm getting that right, when they were deliberating, there were some members who thought suspension or something less than revocation would have been appropriate. And so we would ask you to consider that. Thank you.
President Narducci, members of the Board, that concludes number nine call to the public.
Thank you. For items, we'll move on to item 10. In item 10A through 1, I'm sorry, item 10A1 through 10A9. Unless there's any comments or discussion, I'd like to take these as a single motion. Any comments or discussion? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda items 10A1 through 10A9?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a second. Favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's carried. And now move on to items 10B, and we'll take these individually. Item 10B1 addresses Luis Alvarez. Do I have a motion to adopt the findings of fact, conclusions of law, and the recommendation of the P-PAC and revoke any and all certificates held by Luis V. Alvarez for a period of five years, and that all states and territories be so notified?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Move on to item 10B2. And this pertains to Jose Luis Jimenez. Do I have a motion to adopt the findings of fact, conclusions of law, and the recommendation of the P-PAC and revoke any and all certificates held by Jose Luis Jimenez for a period of five years, and that all states and territories be so notified? Your discussion regarding the five-year period? Anybody not in favor of the P-PAC's decision?
I'm in favor, and I'd like to move.
I do have a question.
Member Burton.
I'm not saying it's going to change my opinion or vote, or, but this is a, so this educator holds a subject matter expert certificate, and I know we approve those, this Board approves those. What's the process, I mean, that they go through in terms of ethics and boundaries, and is that something?
President Narducci, Member Burton, the subject matter expert cert is based upon the applicant's bachelor's or master's degree, and the Department of Education opening transcripts to determine what type of certificate that subject matter expert is qualified for. At this point, the Board's staff is looking at past disciplinary actions that the Board has taken against subject matter expert certs to determine if any additional rules need to be written around the ethical training of those individuals prior to going into classrooms.
Great. That was going to be my next request, but you already beat me to it, so thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion. We have a motion to adopt the findings of fact, conclusions of law, and the recommendation of the P-PAC and revoke any and all certificates held by Jose Luis Jimenez for a period of five years, and that all states and territories be so notified. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Move on to item 10B3. This pertains to Kildare Salazar. Do I have a motion to adopt the findings of fact, conclusions of law, and the recommendations of the P-PAC and revoke any and all certificates held by Kildare Salazar for a period of five years, and that all states and territories be so notified?
So moved.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 10B4. This pertains to Joshua Schneider. Do I have a motion to adopt the findings of fact, conclusions of law, and the recommendations of the P-PAC and revoke any and all certificates held by Jose Joshua Schneider for a period of five years, and that all states and territories be so notified?
I'm sorry, President Narducci, that's.
There's no Jose there?
There's no Jose there. It's Joshua. That was my error.
Sorry. Joshua Schneider for a period of five years, and that all states and territories be so notified.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion has it. Motion passes. Move on to item number 11. Director Williams?
President Narducci, our next meeting is in March.
That's it.
I'm planning a great meeting for all of you.
Thank you.
With the help of the Department.
All right. Is that it?
Unless any members have any comments, questions, concerns, want me to write a research paper for them.
No, we're good. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.